We are making our recommendation to approve the nineteen rates. So I can get those published and out to the membership and also on our website for daily rates, updates and stuff like that. We moved everything pretty much an increment of three to five percent in the areas where we think we can capitalize on income, yet be very competitive with other golf courses in our area of our caliber. We left our youth rates exactly the same. We want to make the golf course extremely accessible to our youth. Membership wise, our car rental rates, we left alone. And that was about, the only thing, we didn't touch on that. We adjusted our corporate sponsorship, which we started last year. Those rates some for those employees and made the employees of corporations extremely accessible to get new people, more bodies up to the golf course. Otherwise, everything else is, should be in order and we just would like to get that ball rolling on getting those published, so.
You have a copy of the packet. Are there any questions of the council for Kevin of the rates?
I'm moving the motion to accept the recommendation of increasing the rates.
Move it to the council.
Then put it on the agenda if it's approved.
I'll second, your honor.
Second, is motion second. Time for discussion. None. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign that motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Next item that we will go to is item number one, and that is an update on the RTC Phase Two Deconstruction Project and mitigation plan. I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth.
Good morning, your honor, members. Thank you. Pursuant to city council direction and subsequently the legislative intent from the last session, city staff along with STANTEC has been working towards Phase Two deconstruction. We have recently completed thirty, sixty and ninety percent plan review, which are all requirements under the state process to be able to do work on historic buildings. And we're now to the final hurdle, so to speak, which is to agree to mitigation strategy with the state Historic Preservation Office. State statute gives the SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office, the authority to consult with local subdivisions to determine appropriate treatments and to seek ways to avoid and mitigate any adverse effects on designated or listed properties. That would be properties that are on the National Register. The SHPO has determined that the proposed actions in Phase Two, which is the removal of the three buildings behind the main tower and horseshoe, would create an adverse effect on the property, thus having to agree to mitigation standards. In order to find an agreeable solution, we had a meeting with them. The mayor and the city engineer were on that meeting as well. And we talked about a couple different things that we could do to potentially satisfy the office to agree on a mitigation plan. And in fact, we started off by looking at potentially fixing up or doing maintenance on the windows of the main Kirkbride Tower, knowing that there's an intention to save that building, no matter what the future holds. And didn't get a lot of traction when we started that conversation, despite the significant price take that went along with it and the scope of that work, which was fairly major. They just weren't feeling as if that was going to do a lot in terms of mitigation to help the historic integrity of the campus or the future of the campus. So seeing an opportunity to introduce a new idea and understanding that a few council members have already talked to me about their desire to move forward towards a full comprehensive plan of the city, I thought I would throw out the bone of doing a master plan for that specific site as a part of this bigger or a standalone plan related to the city's comprehensive plan. It wasn't long after we talked about that and SHPO was certainly on board with that plan and were, we were given the verbal approval that that would satisfy the mitigation plan for not only Phase Two but also Phase One. Under Phase One, we agreed in writing to consider fixing the roof on West Detached. And as you all recall, we did not do that. And now that building is under consideration by Development Group, so we would be unable to expense funds. So they were looking for something that we would agree to that would cover both Phase One and Phase Two in terms of mitigation. And like I mentioned, they gave us verbal approval that a site-specific plan for the Kirkbride would accomplish just that. The next steps, if we are to agree to the master plan, is simply to write back to them saying that we commit to doing this plan. They said it doesn't have to be complete for us to move forward. We simply need to make a commitment and twelve to eighteen months would be an appropriate timeframe. And then they said that they would expedite their response to the city, indicating that that was an approved mitigation plan, so we could then proceed with Phase Two bidding and move down that road. The action I'm looking for today is to make a commitment to complete this master plan, so then we can get that verbal or that agreement in writing and proceed with bidding on Phase Two. I do want to mention two other things. One, we looked at this, or we could look at this, like I mentioned earlier, in conjunction with a larger plan. And in talking to the city planner, we would realize fairly good pricing as a result of combining the two plans, because a lot of doing planning work is that background in compiling of information, which you wouldn't have to duplicate if you did them together. And the other thing I wanted to mention was that in our conversations with SHPO, they gave us some examples of plans that they thought were successful plans, and they estimated the cost would be anywhere between thirty-five and forty-five thousand dollars. And talking to Ryan, we could probably do that or better if we combine these projects. They also identified a couple funding sources for this project. There's a ten thousand dollar legacy grant through the Minnesota Historical Society, and they basically said that that would be a fairly easy one to get for this project. And they also have matching grant funds through their certified local government program, which Fergus Falls is a certified local government, and that's through our Historic Preservation Commission. And those are sixty, forty grants with SHPO giving sixty percent of the project and the local match being forty percent with the ability to use in-kind donations. So staff time would count monetized towards that forty percent match. We're also working on a funding package for the potential of doing a comprehensive plan. And through those efforts, we're identifying several sources of funds. So we could do this work at very minimal cost. There is maybe a little bit of a gap after utilizing these two funds, but we do have remaining funds from the state related to the Kirkbride that we could use to do this. I did work with our city lobbyists to determine that it's probably a stretch to use the state bonding dollars for this work, but we could use Fund 207, which is the cash that was given to the city related to this property.
Hundred and nine thousand left in there.
Hundred and nine thousand remaining in that fund. The final thing I should mention, and I told the Planning Commission I would, they made a motion the other night. They've had a few different discussions over the last few meetings about the Kirkbride Campus, including the plat that the city is recommending for East and West Detached Development and a new initiative that you guys probably read about in the paper yesterday. But their motion was to ask for a work session with the city council, members of the Heritage Preservation Commission, and then a few members of the Otterton County Historical Society. It would be up to you guys if you wanted to entertain that. I said I would bring that forward. It doesn't necessarily have to be related to this discussion, and in fact, I would like to see this, this project move forward because of the amount of time and staff resources we spent on it till now. And it would be an interesting turn of events if we were to pivot here and do something different at this point in time. So with that being said, I would entertain questions, and hopefully I made that as clear as possible. It's a complicated process. We've spent a lot of time, obviously, working through it, and this is kind of that final hurdle to get the green light from the State Historic Preservation Office, and then everything falls into Brian's lap in terms of bidding and moving the project forward.
I would just add a couple of points. This, you know, this, quite honestly, we were at a standstill with SHPO, going back several months on how we were going to resolve this mitigation issue. And we got the commissioner of the Department of Administration involved, and so on the conversation that we had two weeks ago, we went in there with, when you mentioned the windows, just so people recognize, there was, engineer estimates were upwards of six hundred thousand dollars to do that work. And that we were proposing as our part of the mitigation. So when we were able to come to a compromise that involved a plan that has some funding attached with it, that's less than fifty thousand dollars, that allows us to move forward on Phase Two, which we've obviously spent a lot of time, a lot of energy and a lot of efforts in working with, very closely with the State Historical Preservation Office, I would strongly urge us to move forward with this plan, to give them the assurance that we will commit this plan as we seek the funding. But I just say to Andrew, very good work. This is a very challenging process, as we know. There's a lot of, SHPO does have, through like Andrew mentioned, state statutes, the ability to require mitigation efforts. And if we don't agree, if we don't come to an agreement with them, it would go to mediation. I don't think we want to go down that road. I think we have a clear path in front of us that's something that's reasonable, and we've worked hard towards this. So I'm strongly in favor of the compromise that Andrew's made with, with SHPO. So anyway, that's my two cents. Andrew.
I'm sorry, Anthony. That's all right. We're close, A-N. I've been called worse things, so.
Quite regular then.
Actually, more regular than you might think. But anyway, if it was part of a bigger plan, would we, would this still be grant-eligible? Because it would be a portion of it rather than...
Yeah, your honor, council member Hicks, we started by proposing that it be one piece of a larger plan. And in fact, I said, you know, if the city were to do a comprehensive plan, we could look at this as an appendix to the plan.
Right.
And they were acceptable to that. But, you know, talking to the city planner, we could either do it that way or we could do more of a site-specific plan, and that would be probably more valuable in the long run and without adding much cost. So I would, I'd probably defer to Ryan to expand on that. But they did understand that it could be a component of a larger plan and doesn't have to be a standalone project.
But one thing I'll say before I turn over to Ryan, but there was a term, like we said comprehensive and they said Matt, there was a term that they used that they were specific that we use as a term, so.
Yeah. Kind of regardless of how this develops, we are going to work closely with SHPO to ensure that whatever plan comes out of this obviously meets what they're looking for. You know, I'm, I think we would, we would say we would have some economies of scale if we did this all together. My concern, and we'd have to work very closely with whatever consultant we selected, is that they understand that this, this needs to be a pretty substantial master plan for the site, where, you know, we don't want it just to be kind of glossed over, which is what you see in more comprehensive plans, if it's a higher level type plan. You know, we really are going to want to drill down. But that being said, I think we can, we can combine them, because we're going to still have to be, look, you know, any plan's going to have your demographic information, it's going to have your land use, you know, all those type of things. And so we're already going to be doing that for a potential comprehensive plan. It doesn't make much sense to turn back around in twelve months and, you know, if we're doing a master plan and then in twelve months turn around and do a comprehensive plan, have to do all that work over again and, you know, cost of taxpayers another twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, my, I mean, my only concern would be is if it's, as you say, if it's a specific, you know, I mean, SHPO has kind of, you know, they might have more specific consultant that you'd have to use, which may be more expensive for the comprehensive plan to...
It's not uncommon to have a team approach on a comprehensive plan. You know, oftentimes you'll have a master consultant, and then you'll have sub consultants, you know, for engineering-type components in a plan. And there'd be no difference with a historic consultant if we had to bring an additional consultant on, so. We would be working very, very closely with SHPO to ensure that whatever the end product obviously meets what they want to see.
Other questions of Andrew, Ryan?
I would wrap discussion before a motion, and I can make the motion. Go ahead and recommend it, council.
Counsel, there's a motion?
I'll second, your honor.
Second, okay. Further discussion? Scott.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I guess in regard to the presentation that was made on Monday night and the request by the Planning Commission that we have a joint meeting to discuss this, it seems to me there's still an awful lot of unanswered questions here. And I'd like to make the motion to table this until we have that discussion with the Planning Commission as they request it.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, so we'll have to go on that motion.
The table.
We already have a motion.
The motion was to recommend to the council to accept Andrew's recommendation to go forward with the plan.
So someone help me with bottom of the procedure, but I believe we have to vote on the motion that's on the floor right now. Knowing that there's a desire to table, I guess that's all we can say right now, but I believe we have to, unless someone correct me if I'm wrong, but we need to vote on the motion that's on the table, correct? So you can speak to the motion if you'd like, Scott.
I guess my understanding was that a motion to table could come at any time.
A motion to table is actually, a motion to postpone is different than a motion to table, and a motion to postpone would be the proper motion, I believe, in the sense that to a specific time after. A motion to table comes if you have an emergency that needs, something needs to stop, which needs to take up other business before you take the business. It's on the floor. But anyway, not to get wrapped up in the details.
Twenty seconds will help clarify that.
Yeah, maybe, hopefully. But anyway, that's, that's not really here nor there. You're certainly welcome to speak. To the motion to...
In that case, I would, I'll be voting against this motion, but I'm generally in favor of plans. And as we've talked about what the plan might be for this place, I've often even made the comment that why would you even consider any demolition until you've got a plan for what you're going to put in there? And so it would seem like a automatic that I would be in favor of this plan. And I, and I really do like the idea of the plan. I think that that's exactly the thing we need to do. In this case, I think it's being used as a negotiating chip in a way that is not appropriate. And I think that we need to, I need, we need to hear from the Planning Commission and talk with the Planning Commission about this recent proposal that was made on Monday night. And I think that tying ourselves to what is in effect and arbitrary and self-imposed deadline to get this ball rolling by whenever, it doesn't really hold water with me. We can, we can move forward with this at any time. There isn't anything saying that it has to happen right now. And so if we were to wait and have our conversation with the Planning Commission and get some more of that discussion out, and still perhaps end up moving forward with this, fine. But we've got something on the table that was brought up on Monday night that I think that we ought to take a look at.
Thank you, Scott. I would just, I would just comment and respectfully just say that we've worked tirelessly with SHPO over the past year on a process that's moved forward. I think this hopefully has had the opportunity for input. And so I certainly don't, don't, will not shut out any, any proposal on the plan, and I think we've made that clear as well. Two things. First of all, the planning, I mean, if there's a group that has a proposal, they're willing to bring that forward at any time for consideration. The Planning Commission, I don't think, is the place for plans to come forward necessarily. You know, the plat will be reviewed by the Planning Commission. So again, I don't think that a plan at the last, you know, at the eleventh hour to stop this process that's been moving forward. And again, if anyone who says that we haven't worked with the State Historical Preservation Office, who, their job is to, you know, look after the preservation of these buildings, we have worked with them tirelessly, and we've worked on a schedule and on a timeline. And I believe personally that we need to continue along that timeline. It doesn't mean that we cannot consider any plans to come forward, but to disrupt a schedule that's in place for a proposal, I don't think we need to do that. I think we can do them both simultaneously, but that's my opinion. So any other, Jim?
I just want to say that through the years, and I've been here quite a while, we've come to this point of getting something done, and somebody's come in at the last minute with a proposal, and so we've gone along, and it's why we are where we are today. There's things that could have been done a long time ago if we'd have gone ahead when we had the plans to do it. And I think it's time to go ahead and get marching down the road and get this done.
Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion?
I would agree with both your comments, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Fish. I think, you know, it's been a long process, and it's about mitigating for the taxpayer, you know, the risks that are up there. We're not removing, you know, with this second phase, it's not removing, you know, the main horseshoe or anything part of the main horseshoe. And, you know, I've been involved with, you know, negotiations on pieces of the Kirkbride for many years also, and, you know, these things come up at the, like, literally, you know, eleven, eleven fifty-nine. And, you know, it's not an official request, you know, it came to the Planning Commission. It's not a proposal from a developer. It's a concept and an idea which has been floated around forever. You know, I have asked the Friends of the Kirkbride, I've asked the Historical Society to put a proposal together to form a 501(c) type product to develop the tower. And, you know, neither of those will do that. So, you know, I don't think this is the desire, you know, to stop the process from, from the community. So I will be voting in favor of this going to the council and getting the master plan and probably to keep it segregated from a comprehensive plan, just for cleanness in the process.
And just one note for me, for clarification. I'm not opposed to looking at any concepts or proposals that anyone brings forward. What I am against is stopping the process that's been in place for over a year with all the right entities. So I am more than open to look at anything, but we're going to continue. You know, we have to have reasonable timelines and deadlines and stick to it if we're going to something done, so. Again, I want to keep this separate from any, any proposal or idea or any concept that's out there. I think we just, I mean, in my opinion, we need to keep, continue moving forward, so. Anything else from anyone on the council? We have a motion on the floor to bring this recommendation for the agreement with mitigation with SHPO to the council on Monday evening. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign?
No.
That motion carries. Item number two, again, I will call on city administrator Andrew Bremseth, and it is a Coalition of Utility Cities. Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. The Coalition of Utility Cities is a group of municipalities in Minnesota who all have coal power plants or nuclear power plants in their communities. They have been meeting as a group since nineteen ninety-seven, I believe. And just about every one of these communities now has a date in which their facilities and their communities will close or has started to hear rumblings of when that could be down the road. None of these communities are going to experience a closure as soon as the city of Fergus Falls will. And so in conversations with a consultant that is doing a large study on behalf of this group, they were here to pick our brains about some of the work that we've been doing in preparation for the Hoot Lake Power Plant closure. I was made aware of the Coalition of Utility Cities and exploring what their mission is. It became clear to me that they're working on the exact same things as a group that we are, starting to talk about individually here in Fergus Falls, and that is lobbying at the state legislature for things that will soften the impact of the closure of the plant, such as LGA formula changes to be beneficial to these communities, looking at different ways to phase in tax burdens, or something as simple as appropriations during the years in which there's going to be a large gap for these municipalities. Not only that piece, but the study that I previously referenced is going to be much more in-depth than the studies that we were able to do as a standalone community. And so as I inquired about the group and the membership fees and what they're doing, they came back to me and said that if we were to join the group, our membership fees for two thousand nineteen would only be two thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And that gets us the ability to be part of the group with the lobbying effort at the Capitol and get a say in what this study looks like. There would be no intention to be in this group longer than the power plant stands or runs in town, so we're only looking at a few years in which we would benefit. But as the most important issue facing our community in the coming years, I think it's very important that we do anything and everything we can to potentially offset the burden to our local taxpayers that will be coming in two thousand twenty-two taxes based on the two thousand twenty-one plant closure. So I'm recommending to the council that we join the Coalition of Utility Cities for the time being, and it's an annual thing, so we could leave the group at any time. Our dues would be, like I said, two thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars for two thousand nineteen. We do have just under ninety-three hundred dollars left over in the fund that we had set up for our studies on Hoot Lake Power Plant. So the funds are in place, and we would have adequate funding to cover this group for the next couple of years, which would be the, really the only purpose, or the time that it would be purposeful for us to be part of that group. So I'd be glad to answer any questions about the group. They are represented by Flaherty and Hood. We do have experience with lobbyists from Flaherty and Hood, obviously through the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and, and understand the good work that they do on behalf of these member cities. And the other thing I will mention is I've been in contact with our own lobbyist, Joel Carlson, about this issue. And he is going to also be working on the Hoot Lake Power Plant or have it on his radar and looking at things in which he can help with, specific to Fergus Falls, but also was in favor if we were to move in this direction of working with the Coalition in any way that he can to help further the interests of our community. So that's kind of what I know, and my recommendation is that we join this group to really have a strong presence at the Capitol on this major issue in the next couple of years.
Maybe just tack on approving a budget adjustment to carry that ninety-three hundred forward from, because it's in the twenty-eighteen general fund balance, so just carrying that forward to nineteen.
Questions or comments from the council? Scott?
Thank you, Ben. Being a member of this organization, then, is it someone from the staff that attends the meetings, or is it someone from the council? Is there some kind of appointment, some kind of requirement that way?
Yeah, your honor, council member Kwame, we do have to appoint a member and then an alternate member, and it's, it's one seat at the table of the other communities. In most cases, it's the finance person because it's such an impact on the budget, so they're talking about ways in which they can, not to, not to put Bill in his hot seat here, but, so they're looking at ways in which they can, you know, salvage the budgets or get ahead of that from a budgeting perspective. So it generally has been the finance person, but yeah, it has been a staff person for most of the communities. And I should add, there's, there's really two requirements to becoming a member. One is that the, all the communities that are part of the joint powers agreement would approve you to become a member, which they already did at their last meeting, knowing that we were exploring the avenue of potentially joining. They had a meeting and discussed Fergus Falls. We would be the first new member, I think, from the, since the inception back in nineteen ninety-seven. So that part is done, and then the other piece would be us agreeing to that joint powers agreement, which is fairly straightforward, and in discussing with some of you, hasn't really changed since they put it together in nineteen ninety-six, so.
Nineteen ninety-seven. Wow.
Yeah.
So they've been going for twenty years. We're going to come in and ride on their coattails. I like that. Any other questions of Andrew? Thoughts?
I would offer the motion. Go ahead and join.
Thank you.
Second.
Brent, there's a motion to bring this to the council, those recommendations that we join the Coalition of Utility Cities. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign? That motion carries. We can put that on the consent agenda, I believe. Is that all right with everyone? Item number three is a discussion on the number of pets allowed by city ordinance, and I will call on our public works director, Guy Taylor. Morning, Guy.
Morning, mayor, council members. Back in the fall, we received a request from a resident to increase the number of allowed animals per residence. Currently, the code does not allow more than four animals in residence, and that includes a provision that there would be no more than three dogs or three cats, but a combination of dogs and cats, a total of no more than four. Committee, or a group met, it wasn't a committee, of staff, councilman Arneson and city attorney, and the recommendation from that group was to leave the ordinance as it is. and the recommendation from that group was to leave the ordinance as it is. So, that's where we're at. I think most people understand the background, but should we leave it open?
I think we left, we left off just some people going back and forth, should we change the number, should it be cats versus dogs? So, anyway, just thought we'd bring it back to the committee with the chance for the new councilmembers to give their input before we make a motion to bring this to the council. Go ahead, Brent.
I talked to Guy earlier and I asked him if there would be a issue of leaving the number the same, but getting rid of the rest. You know, eliminating the three cats or the three dogs. Either way it goes, you have four pets. And in some ways, that might help some people because, like in this person's case, unless she has a cat that, you know, is not part of this, she could get the extra dog, but we'd still be keeping it. And I don't know, did you look into that or?
Yeah. From staff's perspective, we don't really have an opinion if it's a total of four dogs or four cats. It doesn't really matter.
This way here would just remain, the number would remain the same, but it would give people a little bit more of an option.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And maybe what we can do is talk about some options, because I know that I've had some others as well and I would, I would say that four dogs is different than four cats, maybe, or, you know. I don't have my heart, cats pinned on today, but I love dogs, too. But, you know, if you have, if you have cats as an indoor pets, I think that's different than having four dogs outside in the yard. And then the other, so I would, I would suggest maybe looking at just taking the, or a combination of four, you know, allow three dogs and three cats. That's one option as well. The other question I would have for you guys is just talking to different people about this and some of the, some of the issues that we have with dogs and, with dogs, is it rental versus single family, is that part of the issue here? I can understand if you're living in a multifamily district where you have, you know, more density on a particular area, that dogs, you know, are going to possibly create more of a problem than in a single-family residence where you have some more space for the animals? Is that?
Yeah, the code doesn't address that, obviously, but landlord-specific or property-specific, it would be up to them to decide. Our ordinance would allow that. If it's per residence, they can have up to four.
Some residents would. Would include, obviously, an apartment or a single-family house. But we could limit that by zone, I suppose, right, if we wanted to? Like a multifamily, like a R-four could be, anyway.
I think it would be complicated.
That would be.
I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how we would patrol it, you know?
Well, we'd just have to hire some more police officers.
That would work.
I think that's up to the landlord.
I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking. Scott?
My question has to do with, if nothing changes and this just remains as-is, what's the enforcement side of this? If someone does go and get five animals, six animals, whatever, I mean, we can tell them to stop, what do we go and impound their animals? I mean, what's the enforcement side of this?
Well, there's probably cases out there right now that have more than what's allowed, so we don't find out about them unless there's a complaint. We don't go looking for them, obviously, but if we do learn of it, we will try to enforce the ordinance and ultimately, it could come to confiscating some animals.
All right. Justin, and then I know Natalie is the one that brought this forward, so maybe we'll call on her next, but Justin, did you, did you have any thoughts, you were on the group that met with the city staff, did you have any thoughts or anything to add?
I guess the only thing I'd add is, you know, the, I think the opinion of the group was, you know, it doesn't seem anyway that anything's broken and the other opinion was there are a few things in terms of the number of animals and there are a few things within our policies and procedures that we wanted to tighten up. I think one of them was if animals land in the impound that aren't registered, having a way to get them registered, having them a way to maybe enforce that with some form of a collection before they can get their animal back, so we can make sure that those animals are registered, they have their shots, they have all those things. And really, this is really to the safety of the residents of these animals that are out. So, I think maybe that comes back at a different time to kind of make sure we can put some of these things in place, if we do change or if we don't change the ordinance, but I think you're right. I think four dogs, I have to go outside more often and potentially could be tied up outside is different than four cats that generally don't see the outside, so I just, you know, it's, it's one of those things where I don't know there's a right or a wrong, but whatever we're comfortable with, how many animals we think should be allowed, I think is kind of.
Ben, one more comment?
Yeah, of course, Scott, go ahead.
It seems to me that the ordinance as it is isn't necessarily a problem, but what we're looking for is a way that there can be an exception. And if the ordinance had within it some verbiage that allowed for a way to appeal in a specific case or a way to get a variance in a specific case, we wouldn't have to change it for the whole city, but maybe an individual has a way to get an exception for their specific address or their, and then, you know, tie it to a time window, a renewable license, you know, some kind of a way that it doesn't just become a permanent thing. It seems like there ought to be a way to at least allow an option for someone to get an exception without necessarily changing what we've got.
Sure. That's a good point, Scott, and I think that that's initially, I think, what the petitioner was asking for and without making it too complicated, if, maybe if someone could demonstrate that their, their animals are licensed, because that would take care of a lot of the problem right there, just having the animals licensed and leave that to discretion of animal control and this is Public Works, I, you know. Caroline?
I kind of agree with Scott just because, you know, she's clearly a responsible pet owner, so I'd have a hard time telling a responsible pet owner that they can't have more pets, but I do understand why there's an ordinance here as well, because not everyone's a responsible pet owner. So, it is kind of a tough spot, but just like to remind, if there is a way we could do an exception like Ben had said or Scott had said, in this case, I feel like that would be a good way to go.
Would, would that be a motion to ask the staff to bring us back with some sort of proposal on how they would have that variance or that exception process?
Yeah, I would be willing to make that motion, that we investigate the options for allowing an exception to the existing ordinance.
The motion is second.
Your Honor, if, coming back to what Councilmember Arneson was saying was that, you know, maybe it's a time to actually just rehash the entire ordinance, because if you're, I like the idea of that if an animal gets into the pound, you know, that that animal becomes, you know, flagged and registered before the owner can get it back, so maybe it's a time to also just review the entire ordinance.
We actually do have that piece in place.
Oh.
Yeah. If it's picked up by animal control or delivered to the Humane Society by some means, they do make sure it's licensed.
So, I'm sure it's there, then that's fine, so.
So, I guess the motion on the table, on the floor, I'm sorry, motion on the floor is to ask staff to have some sort of exception, you know, some sort of policy in place that allows for an exception for responsible pet owners. Justin, did you have something to add or?
There's something in place that we talked at that meeting there, there should be an expense monetarily from the owner, because there's multiple animals that land out there numerous times throughout the year and there's no recourse for our staff to be doing this. And so, I think, I think it was Al that mentioned that it would be nice to have something and, I mean, not, nothing to penalize the owner, but at least to let them know that they shouldn't let their dog run loose, because eight times in the pound and they get it back every time for no cost. We should make sure that there's some, some form of recourse.
Actually, where Al was coming with that was a form of penalizing the owners, making them come to.
There's any recourse, I'm not sure you penalize them.
Well, I mean, we're not talking hundreds of dollars, but just something on a small monetary. He was saying a twenty-five dollars payable, they have to come to City Hall to, you know, pay a fine, basically, and then there would be a release given, they could take to the Humane Society and get their animal back.
Do you have one clear about the motion that we're directing, asking staff to come back with the recommendation? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Guy. Weather closure policy, again, we'll call on City Administrator Andrew Bremseth.
Thank you, Your Honor members. We do not currently have a weather closing policy in place and I think some of the employees who have been here for twenty-five years have said it's probably only happened two or three times during those years, but a few weeks ago, over the Christmas break, we were forced to close City Hall an hour or two early based on how bad the weather got and Lake Region Healthcare and a lot of other organizations were closing down as well. And so, I made the decision to send staff home with their safety being the number one concern and after the fact, there were several questions and concerns about how we would handle those couple hours. A lot of staff was already on break because of the Christmas holiday, others didn't want to have to use vacation or didn't have it and so wanted to put a policy in place. And essentially, what this policy would do is allow a member of staff to either use vacation leave, sick leave, accrued comp time, or take a corresponding number of hours without compensation and give the employee options in the case in which we have to close the building. But what I don't want in these instances is staff to feel like they have to stay here despite the building being closed because they don't have options, because safety is the number one priority. So, I'm recommending this policy, which is mirrored after Ottertown County and would encourage its adoption.
Questions or comments on the proposed policy? Is there a motion to?
I'll make the motion and I've got a question.
Anthony makes the motions or second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Go ahead, Anthony.
My only kind of question was on the, you know, I'm assuming, obviously, we kind of checked this legally, that we can force people to use these hours, as it were. And then, is there any way that we could have it that you have to use kind of like, obviously, vacation sick or compensatory before taking it without pay?
We could. I don't think anybody would take it without pay if they had those options at their disposal and, you know, this, this more or less gives the department head or supervisor some latitude to work through that with the employee, but if we want to get more specific language, we certainly could, but I don't envision that ever being a problem and, and to be totally honest with you, I don't envision closing the building if, you know, if ever. It's gonna be a rare circumstance that we have to. If that's your wish, we certainly could.
All right, we have a motion. Yes, Scott?
Yeah, I realize the city isn't like a manufacturing company where you just shut down the line and then started up again when you've got the people there and all that, but it does seem like there ought to be a way for an employee to make up the time rather than either give up their comp time or, or something. And I don't know how that would really work, but it just seems like there should be one more option of the list of options that allow someone to make up the time that they've lost.
Is there a flex policy at all?
It depends really on the position and what the role is. I mean, there's, the city is so diverse in job duties, you know, there's some employees that, when we call the work off, that's when they're gonna come in. There's some, some employees that absolutely cannot leave and there's others that really, their duties fall within certain times of the day because the building is open. So, it would be hard to capture all of the various scenarios in the policy, but I will say this, we're very reasonable as an employer and we continue to be reasonable. It's nice to have these parameters in place if there are questions, but we would be flexible to work with somebody if that was necessity. But Bill, go ahead.
I'm wondering if that line about utilizing accrued compensatory time would cover that because I know we have laws we have to work under, you know, if you're gone these two hours, well, if you make it up tomorrow, you're still in that pay period and that probably would fall under that line, so that would probably cover your concern. I'm thinking, anyway.
It could, yes, and that's another consideration we're not gonna get into with the policy, but, you know, we have a defined work week within our union contracts and, and some of these, you know, there's some requirements as to when comp time should be or could be used and all these things will be taken into consideration for specific instances.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to suggest, recommend this policy to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion carries and I believe we can put that on the consent agenda as well. Next item on the agenda is out-of-state travel policy for elected officials. Andrew Bremseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor members. This is straightforward. Minnesota state statute requires that we take this action, that out-of-state travel that's funded by the city for elected officials is approved by the city council in a public forum. We should be approving this resolution on an annual basis and we will do so going forward in the January housekeeping meeting that we had a few weeks ago. So, we're just looking to get the resolution in the books and then if there's a major out-of-state travel, we'll have those things come before the council in the future that, you know, those certainly could be consent items because it's, there are times where it's very reasonable travel. And unfortunately, being a border city, North Dakota and Wapatoen, there's oftentimes we're going to those cities, but it does fall under this policy from a state statute perspective.
Any questions, comments?
I will offer that.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Justin. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Next is audit engagement letter. We'll call on our finance director, Bill Songmore. Morning, Bill.
Good morning, thank you, Your Honor. In your packet, I put a memo together explaining the audit engagement letter. Cities are required by state statute to have an annual financial audit, so certainly we participate in that. That's something we have to do each year. We prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. You'll hear us refer to that as a CAFER, it's just the initials for that. And Bergen KDV is an auditing firm we've worked with since the mid-nineties and we've periodically done reviews of our audit fees to make sure we're in the ballpark and we did review that last October, came before the council and you had a consensus to move forward and get an audit engagement letter. It would be for a three, a three-year term. So, for the audits for the year ending eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, so auditors typically come in about the third week in March. We start our prep for that right now, actually, and work all the way through June when we bring that audit report to you. But I did review our audit fees with like-sized cities and we're very much, seem to be getting the better deal, actually, when I compare against other cities. Part of that is we prepare our own audit report in-house, but that's just a portion of that when I compared what other cities are paying to have that done. Our fees also seem to be under others, so I'm very pleased with that. Pleased with the work Bergen KDV does, they do specialize in governments and that's important for our comprehensive annual financial report, as we have received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting since nineteen ninety-one. So, I always, of course, want to continue to receive that, but we did just receive notice just last week that we, again, received that for the two thousand seventeen audits. That's just a side note, but the proposal is, for the city financial audit, thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, up from thirty-three one hundred, and then those fees would be held flat for those three years, as that thirty-three thousand one hundred was held flat for those previous three years. Audit of a component unit, we have the EIC, which is a component unit of the city. That'll probably change for the nineteen year with the change in the structure and probably won't be a component unit any longer of the city, but as of two thousand eighteen they are, so we'll have that. And then if we have a federal single audit, that's a federal requirement, those fees would be three thousand three fifty. I don't foresee having one for eighteen, but we probably will. It's potential for nineteen, I would say, Brian, aren't we some significant federal dollars for Lincoln? So, that's a possibility. Threshold is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal receipts to have an audit. So, my recommendation is that you do approve this engagement letter.
Any questions for our finance director?
Now, is there a motion to bring this to the council on Monday?
Make a motion.
Member Thompson, Mr. Kwame, thank you, councilmember. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a taxi lane relocation process, public improvement nine three four six, our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, Your Honor and members of the council. Before you, this car has remedied guards to the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport. Just recently, we had another fifty-ten inspection at the airport. This occurs every three years and happens statewide. This is an effort to maintain by aeronautics, Mid-Dot Aeronautics, that our airport is running safe operations. Everything was fine except one of the findings, there was a non-standard condition classified as a high-level airside safety concern. That requires us to get this corrected. Speaking with staff at state licensure, they have indicated if we don't get this, taking care of this next year, they are gonna be perhaps revoking our license. So, for the record, I'm gonna, I'm not entirely sure after the decades why this existing taxi lane that's indicated in the green has just recently been cited. However, regardless, I consider this kind of more so a good thing and in fact, in a manner, it's a high airside need, therefore, the contribution rate from the FAA and the state, obviously, their ratio of contribution. their ratio of contribution increases. So if you return, if you review the exhibit there on the screen, the subject taxi lane is indicated in the green revision cloud. The corrective action is a new taxi lane to serve the hangers to the north side, which is that blue alignment. This will get, by doing this relocation, it will get this taxi lane that serves us north outside of our runway 35 departure surface. The existing surf, the existing taxi lane is about 580 feet in length, 40 feet, but it's heavily deteriorated. So like I said, I consider this a really good thing at this time to have something taken care of and get a new taxi lane constructed. So if acceptable, we would begin a design specifications. I anticipate a bid opening in April. Once we get those bids, if we get favorable prices, we'll package everything up and send it to the state for an official grant request similar to previous practices. So on the second page, I have outlined the total project funding, anticipated shares. Between the state and the federal, we're looking at about 95% contribution. Our local share about 5%. Total estimated project cost about $535,000. Our local share is approximately $26,750. This, of course, is, could be funded through our Airport 456 Capital Improvement Fund. Sufficient funds are available. So at this time, I'm requesting initiating Public Improvement 9346, a taxi lane relocation project. Accept SEH's professional services proposal for design in the amount of $43,000, and authorization to submit the pre-grant application for this project. And I will open up for any questions.
Any questions of Brian?
I think, I think the airport is a critical infrastructure of the, of the city, and I think at 95% grant match, it's hard to refuse. So I'd make the motion that we, do you want the, do you want them as three separate items? Right, I made the motion that we accept the recommendation of staff to open the Public Improvement, except SEH's design, submit a grant.
I'll second.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Krista. Any further discussion? Scott?
So our share would be the $26,000, but then we also have the $43,000 in the application and, and whatnot.
No, that, for a little correction, Councilmember Kwame, if you look at it, all of our, between the construction costs, all those design from SEH's and contingencies and everything, that's all part of the total project cost.
The $43,000 is included in that whole deal?
Yes, yes. So that 5% of the total project cost is approximately estimated at $26,000.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Brian. Any other questions? Is there any discussion? All in favor of moving this forward, motion forward to the council, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We've already done item number eight. We have at least one quick, two quick items.
If we have time, there's two additional items. The first one is from Councilmember Kwame, and I just turn it right over to him. And then we have another item on 320 West Alcott.
Thanks. Andrew, you need to remind me what I, what I asked for.
Roundabout, the roundabout on Tower Road.
That's right.
Sorry. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah. I just wanted to introduce it as a topic, not looking for any discussion on it tonight. But I had a member of my ward ask if we could consider a roundabout at the intersection of College Way and Tower Road, and what it would take to do that. And with College Way being under construction in this coming construction year, the comment might be made that, well, why didn't we do that at the same time? And, you know, given that there's an awful lot of work to put something like that together, I can't see how it could in any way happen this summer during that season. But to get it on our radar and possibly ask that that intersection be reviewed, along with the other intersections that are being reviewed by the county along that route, I would like to request that we take a look at that.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Andrew, you had another item?
Yeah, Your Honor. Yep, Guy Taylor.
320 West Alcott?
Yeah, a little background. Back in June last year, the council authorized purchase of 320 West Alcott. It was being offered on an online auction. It's a dilapidated property, so it's been on our radar for quite a few years to try to get it cleaned up. We were not the successful bidder at that time. Since then, I think it's sold two times since that first time in June. So now the current owner, Equity and Help, a Florida corporation, they are agreeing to donate that property to the city. So what we're looking for today is exception, accepting that donation from Equity and Help, and then authorizing staff to put out a request for proposals for redevelopment of that property once we've gone in there and done the cleanup, the demo of the, of the structure. We've got to get a survey done, and then we'll do the demo. Between those two projects, we will likely be under what the council authorized to purchase it last June, an amount of $12,000.
It would end up being a buildable lot after this.
Yes.
Motion to bring this to the council?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. After discussion, see none. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Guy. Just a couple quick...
Your Honor, just one other item that we never kind of discussed when we were discussing. The RTC Administrator brought forward a, a request by the planning commission to do a joint meeting. We never really answered that question.
Sure.
Can we, I mean, whether we want to do that or we don't want to do that.
Well, I, I, here's my thought. My suggestion would be that, being that we have new council members, and we will be appointing a new planning commission on the 22nd, maybe it makes sense to ask staff to plan a work session to make sure that everyone's on the same page, roles, responsibilities. And the planning commission will be combined with the zoning board, so there'll be some different tasks charged to them. So could we, could we ask staff to see if there's a time that we could maybe do our 4:30 meeting? May that be...
I mean, make, yeah, so do a work session prior to a council meeting between the, the new, so it'd be, it'd be sometime in February. Yeah, if there's, if there's any notes or anything from the planning commission regarding this subject matter, can we get that circulated to council prior?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there was a surmise in the newspaper, but that's...
Maybe just a little clarification. It seemed to me that the motion that was made at the planning commission had, really wasn't regarding the proposal. It was regarding just getting a, a joint meeting, asking for exactly where we're at, requesting right now, a joint meeting between the council and the staff. That was made by Laurel, she's here, Laurel Kilby, she's here. And I think that the intent was to make sure that the planning commission understands the intentions of the council as they go look forward to plat that property. So I think that, that was the intent, if there's any clarification. Is that accurate?
Thank you, Mayor. The intent was not necessarily an, or wasn't an endorsement of the plan that one of the fellow commission members brought forward. Not saying that we were discrediting that plan, but that wasn't the motion as the paper reflected it to be. There is going to be a correction printed in the paper today to clarify that, hopefully, to the public. But what we're asking for is a meeting before we go forward with plating that property to find out where the council is at, because we have a lot of different conversations going on from the public that's coming to our meetings and different commission members. And it seems like it would be a waste of everyone's time if we're not moving together in a direction. And we want to plat it in a way that makes sense for, for what the council's intent with the property is. It's not second guessing what the council's doing. What we're trying to do is work with the overall intent of the property and, and go in the same direction. I mean, obviously have discussion, just like you guys are having, but, but work together in, in one direction, because we have a lot of conversations that are happening that might not be the most productive in our meeting. Maybe those conversations should be with the council versus at the planning commission level. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, though. So we, has everyone agreeable to having staff see if there's a time that we can find a work session, a 4:30 before council meeting?
We'll do that. We'll do that in February, Your Honor. Yep. Get the new members on board and...
Sounds good. So we have the, next council meeting will be January 22nd due to the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday on Monday. So that's Tuesday, the 22nd, at 5:30. At 5 o'clock, there is a orientation session for the council. And, and hopefully, we'll get some clarification, as Anthony mentioned. Just one, I did a little research while I was kind of listening to some of the things that were being said. Yeah. But I, we'll clarify this on, on Tuesday night. But Scott, your motion should have been allowed to either have a second or die for lack of a second and then vote it on. Just for clarification, and the reason I make the distinction between a motion to table and a motion to postpone is just because a motion to postpone is debatable and a motion to table is not. And so I think we can clarify that on Tuesday night. But yes, if your motion had a second, then we should have voted on that motion. It can be made at any time. So that's my mistake, and we'll, we'll move forward with that understanding. We'll clarify that on, on Tuesday night, exactly the language that, that we use. So also, on the 22nd, the library opens. So hopefully, everyone is able to get to the library on, on Tuesday, January 22nd, and, and take a look at that. I think you're going to be ecstatic. That's, that's what I, that's what I think. So any other announcements?
I have one. The Kiwanis, Lake Alice Winter Carnival has been postponed due to the weather this weekend. It will now be held February 10th.
February 10th, Sunday, February 10th, for the Kiwanis Carnival, Winter Carnival on Lake Alice. Thank you, Guy. Anything else?
It's going to be too cold this weekend.
Maybe a little.